Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening. Welcome to our meeting of 5th October. It's lovely to see so many people here. I think I know everybody. If you don't know me, I'm Julie Smith. First of all, we have our clerk talking about housekeeping. Thank you, Mayor. The toilets are through the double doors where you entered and to the left, and the emergency exit is just behind councillor Johnson. There's no fire drill planned, and the emergency exits are here and where you came in. Please switch off all mobile phones. I must apologise firstly. Those of you who were here last month will know that the PA equipment was malfunctioning, and therefore I sent it straight off to be repaired. However, it hasn't come back yet, so all the councillors will just speak up, and we'd be grateful if, when you make your comments, you would speak up as well. I'll go through the procedure to be followed if you wish to speak during the public forum. If you do wish to speak, please raise your hand, and the mayor will write the names and contact details down. She will then invite your comments from the list of names. If you do not raise your hand at this time, you will not be permitted to speak. Please stand unless it is difficult for you to do so, and speak so that everyone can hear you. State your name for the minutes, and then go ahead with your question or comment, addressing it to the mayor. Under the Town Council's standing orders, members of the public may speak once for no more than three minutes, and the public forum will not exceed thirty minutes. Standing order 1F. Your question or comment will be noted, and a response will be sent to you after any research has been carried out. The Town Council is not required to enter into any debate in respect of any comment. Standing order 1G. Braden Town Council has a transparency policy which was adopted in October 2016, and if any member of the public has any concerns relating to the operation of the Town Council, the staff, or financial arrangements, please contact me to make an appointment to view the appropriate documents and discuss your concerns openly. And now, ladies and gentlemen, we have councillor Guernon who wishes to speak.
Great, thank you. I've been asked to make this statement because of my previous experience in addressing courts. Before the meeting begins, it's proper that everybody present is aware that a member of the public intends to make a video and sound recording in short film of the proceedings here tonight. He has the right to do so. The relevant rules date from 2014, and they specifically allow the filming and publication on the internet of public meetings. However, with rights come responsibilities. The law of the land applies, including the laws of libel and slander and the law of public order. It should go without saying that freedom of speech within the law should be exercised with personal and social responsibility, showing respect and tolerance towards the views of others. It follows then that vulnerable people must be protected. If you consider yourself or anybody you are caring for to be in this category, please make yourself known to the filmmaker and make clear any objection you may have to be included in any recording which might be published. The rules also lay down that the filmmaker must not disrupt the meeting. In particular, they may not use noisy equipment or make a noise moving the equipment during the meeting. They may not, whilst in the meeting, make any oral or audible commentary for the recording. They may not use intrusive lighting. They may not request that any statement or action be repeated. They may not impede or obstruct or obstruct any councillor, member of council staff, or any other member of the public or operate the equipment in a manner which is intrusive to anybody. They may not leave the area set aside for members of the public except to leave the meeting. In short, they may not act in a way which disrupts the meeting. A contravention of these simple, straightforward, reasonable, and necessary requirements may be considered as destructive and may result in the person responsible being ejected from the meeting. Having said that, what is published will be outside the control of the council. Careful note should be taken that any editing of the published recording, whether by addition of extraordinary material or by omission of part of the recording or by reordering a true sequence of events which alters or falsifies the nature of the meeting or of anything said or done or any decision taken may well be actionable in civil or criminal law. Any commentary which goes beyond the bounds of responsible reporting leading to an unwarranted attack on the integrity or reputation of any person will be actionable at law. It's my intention to submit this statement to form the basis after discussion and appropriate advice of a new Town Council policy on recording of meetings. The guidelines on the 2014 regulations say that the council would do well to provide a facility for reporting. We've done so. We've got a press table over to the side there in its normal place. You will observe the equipment is between the public and the council. I would invite any member of the public who is being obstructed by the equipment to say so. If they think it's in their way, they have the power to move, or they have the power to request the council to ask the equipment be moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
Well, do the councillors believe? Yeah, the equipment is right in the middle. It's between us and the public. It's between me and several members of the public. I'm sure an adequate film will be made without it in the middle there. It's my opinion, and I asked my colleagues what they think, that it ought to be moved.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I agree.
Where would you like it moved to? Outside the room, is it?
No, there's a press facility for the press.
Okay. I'd question you have that right, but I'm not going to make a fuss about it now.
I'm sure you've read the guidelines, as I have.
Pardon?
I'm sure you've read the guidelines, as I have.
Whose guidelines do I?
The government guideline on the 2014 regulations, published by the ministry.
All right, okay. You could have told me before the meeting, couldn't you, to be fair? Before I'd set this all up.
The meeting was...
You could see I was setting it all up. Why not tell me then? Rather than, you know, wait until this is going, wait until I'm recording, and then make me have to move it.
Sir!
It's just obstruction, isn't it?
If you don't desist, Mr. Offer, I will have you removed from this building. Okay. Can I take my bid now? Right, I'm now going to open the meeting. First of all...
I can't see, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah. I'll see him, Mr. Offer, tonight.
First of all, I'd like to say something to everybody. Firstly, may I say that I have been a Town Councillor since 1995, and during the whole of that time, I've been proud to serve my community and work with other councillors, successive Town Claws and the people of this town. Braden Town Councillors carry out their responsibilities on a voluntary basis and do not receive any expenses whatsoever, not even for telephones at home or fuel to get to other meetings or car parking fees. At the last meeting, the atmosphere during the public forum and behaviour at times during the meeting proper was intimidating and wholly unacceptable. In future, I ask the councillors and the paid staff of the Town Council are treated with respect and courtesy as verbal abuse and intimidation will not be tolerated, whether in a public meeting or whilst we are carrying out our normal duties. Okay. Thank you. May I ask the general people in the public here that are smiling at me? Thank you. Good to smile. I need less muscles in your face. Who would like to speak to us? Raise your hands. Thank you. This will be the only opportunity to speak. So if you think this is the public forum, so you have a chance to speak, would you like to raise your hand? Would you like to speak, Frank? Yes, because we put your agenda...
I'm sorry, perhaps because I can only speak...
No, no, no.
Because I can only speak on this piece of paper. I don't believe I've had time to read that and understand what I could ask a question.
You have a... And on the website. Anyone else? Please first. Hello, Karen.
All right, yeah, well, I just want to bring to your attention a matter which is not on your agenda, but maybe it could be in the future. And that has to do with a road that I used to get to my home. It used to be called Nambal Farm Lane. And it had a sign at the beginning of it saying Nambal Farm Lane. And this awesome Island Roads took off the name, so now it's a nameless road. And that might not mean anything. And Island Roads have, in the past, maintained that road in terms of they've filled in hotels. But I want...
Please help me. Please help me. Stand up.
All right, yeah. Now, I brought this matter to the attention of the County Councillor, who will investigate it for me. And I did mention it to councillor Johnson here because he shares the same road with me. And there's five households who are served by that road and a farm. It may be no worry at all. Maybe the Island Roads will carry on filling in the hotels like they always have before. But why have they suddenly taken away the name is the question. And my anxiety is aggravated by the fact that one of my neighbours recently asked the guys at Island Roads who were up at the top of the road doing work why the name was off, and they said, "Oh, you've got to establish that it's supposed to be a maintained road." So I'm thinking, have they deleted it from their contract? That's my question.
We've had this in answer to you, Fanny. We've had this in Braden before, where the signs have just disappeared.
All right.
And we don't want them to disappear because it's part of our, you know, what we are. They're old-fashioned signs, some of them. They're from the past, in history. It will be noted, okay? We can't answer it now, but it will be researched for you, and you will get feedback.
Can I ask, is that the one from the sort of triangular junction near the end or polling shops?
Yes.
That one, yeah.
Would you like to say something about this?
Okay. Brian Tindall, you all know me now. It's only because on the agenda you've got Island Roads, and it's considered the actions of Island Roads during the reservicing works. As I can't speak during that time, and I now can only speak afterwards, could I just tell you what happened on that night with me, so that you're aware? I came back from county council meeting, found the road as blocked, parked up at the surgery, because I've already asked for previous permission to do that, and then walked down, found the man who's in charge of Island Roads, told him it was a day early, etc. And then from there, from there, I started discussing. He was actually then got abused by a member of the public violently. Well, not violently, violently in language. He handled that and went away. But I did suggest to him that he actually went into the various, the two pubs to tell them that it's going to be closed, because otherwise at closing time, he might have had more aggressive people coming out finding that they can't move their cars. So he went and did that. So the next morning, and I think the clerk would have seen my email, to Island Roads, every Tom, Dick, and Harry in it, and everyone else, and Ian Ward, cabinet member for roads, plus the two pubs as well, complaining about what had happened and how they did not advise anybody, tell anybody. And I added to that, not many days before, I'd put a press release out saying they were upset about the abuse that their staff were getting when they're doing the roadworks. And I did suggest people might get a slightly bit upset if they've made all their plans to manoeuvre around these roadworks, which everyone except happens, only to find they've been changed. And they might get a little bit upset about it. What seems to have happened, and I'm not saying it's only my email because there were bombarded from others as well, but I have noticed on my emails that Island Roads have been a lot more helpful with emails coming out advising where things are and getting copies of letters which are going to the residents and everything else. So somewhere along the line, and I'm not saying it's me on my own, but they have learnt a lesson. Okay? As I couldn't speak before, I thought I'd get it in now. If that's okay.
Next speaker is Nigel, please.
Yes. I misunderstood, Madam Chairman, so I do have an item that's not on the agenda this month. I'll bring it next month.
Or you can ask us to be on the agenda for next month?
Oh, right. Thank you. It's in connection with deciding with the defibrillator which we've discussed before. It was discussed having it moved to the wall on this building. I just wanted to raise that again.
All right. We can be in contact with you too if you wish to give more detail, like us too. Thank you. And thanks. Dave, please.
Well, if I may speak. It's going to be against this. I hadn't intended to do this, but you've just made a speech at the beginning of your council. I haven't been attending the council meeting since the first council meeting due to family's ill health and problems. I attended the first meeting. I was totally shocked at your change of attitude. I've been going to council meetings in this town for the last forty-five years. And at all times in those forty-five years, the public forum has been an open public forum for people in this audience to discuss what is on their mind and it's relevant to the town. This is probably the reason I've heard so many comments this week that people are not coming to this meeting because they feel that their freedom of speech has been capped. You're now enforcing the standing orders, and I believe it's a backward step for this town. If you listened in the past, and I'm sure you would, Mayor, to the people that have come to this town to give talks and to listen to people in this town, they've always said what a wonderful atmosphere Braden Town Council is because of its wildly open agenda for people to talk. That has been taken away, and the people of the town don't like it at all. I can assure you of that. As I said, I wasn't going to talk about that, but that is my point tonight.
Here, here.
Here, here.
I hope something's done about it, not just noted.
I think yesterday, the FNG committee meeting, the resolution was passed to address this issue. Unfortunately, due to protocol, we won't be able to have it formally enforced until the December meeting to bring the public forum where other issues outside the agenda will be able to be raised. Hopefully, next November, we will be able to find a way around it and be able to include it. So we are keeping within the law of the land, but we are addressing it. And I hope, as Mr. Offer was at the meeting, he may explain to you that we have now addressed this. I'm sorry we can't do it at this meeting fully, but we will get this sorted out. So please take confidence that we are...
Well, it's the people of the town you need to reassure, not just me.
I'm sure Mr. Castle and Dave, he can't do that. And we are a community at our hall. We are, something went wrong, we've fixed it, we're fixing it. We've just worked together, because I'm frightened that, yeah, there's a bit of hurt out there. But we've changed it now, and we are working on it. And I'm hoping that the public forum will be back to the positive and helpful way it happened.
Is there anyone else? I've got ten minutes, so if anybody does want to speak, except to me. Okay. I can see a hand up.
I just wondered if you've got anywhere near pollution in the High Street.
Can I just say...
Because the Mayor of London's going on about it, I wonder if anything's done. You can hardly breathe down the High Street sometimes.
I'm just saying that we've got ten minutes there, so we can sit here and do nothing, but that's not many people...
I just wondered if you've got anywhere near...
Yes, I'm allowing you to speak. What's your name? Tell me again.
Holland.
Okay. Right, Anne.
Because London, London Mayor goes on about pollution in London, and down the High Street, you can hardly breathe sometimes with the lorries, coaches, tractors. And I just wondered if you've got anywhere to be to what the London Mayor said.
We did have it tested, didn't we, Mr. Offer? Yes, would you like to come into the office next week and speak to Linda? Could you do that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Speak to you then, after you've talked. George, you had your hand up. What would you like to speak about?
I wanted to talk about the council and the conduct of the meetings. And very contrary to what has just been said, you are all democratically elected. You were, what was it, three months ago, four months ago? The three thousand people, I think, voted. Voted for you to be their spokespeople. And I'm a former chairman of a parish council in West Sussex before we moved here, and I'm relatively new to here. But I speak to lots of people from Braden. As you may know, I run a pub. And I'm having universal praise about the fact that the meetings are now being run properly. I can't speak for how they worked in the past because obviously I wasn't there. I would imagine the gentleman who's recording has recorded some of the old meetings, which we could obviously see. But I would like to offer my praise that the council is running the meetings as they are legally bound to by statute. And I think it's very good to see.
Thank you very much. And also, can I keep not have laughing when there are other people speaking?
Sorry about that, Madam Mayor.
It's just...
Again, we've got a gentleman here who hasn't seen the council meeting before your councillors took charge, and there was a totally different atmosphere to what it is now. I'm sorry.
I must say again, it's light, not loud.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm being polite. Thank you for...
So shall we start the meeting now then? Okay. First item on our agenda is apologies for absence. Yes, Mayor, a councillor, Whitey, has been in hospital all day today and he's unable to attend the meeting. The next item is declarations of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest. Please tell me if you can't hear me. Put your hand up. Number six, Mayor. And minutes of the last meeting. Everybody have a quick look. Propose, please. There should be some... And a vote, please. Thank you. The next thing is the minute is the extraordinary meeting on the 20th September. Are you happy with those? We might send things...
No.
Proposer, please. Thank you. Second up? Thank you. And a vote. Thank you very much. All right, the next item is finance. To ratify payments made since the 1st September 2017 as listed on the payment sheet. That's the pink one. Any queries? Are there any queries, please, councillors?
Does the tallins one, that includes extra work that's been done for the broken walls and things?
No, that's on the next account. We charged thirty pounds overall for that one. That would be...
Next one, then.
Next time.
Just to understand, what, eighty pounds for the waste bags? Is there a lot of waste bags?
Yes, it is. We had lost waste bags delivered, and we had to pay one pound twenty for each waste bag, and we sold them at a five B profit.
Oh, is this...
And these are the green waste bags that are collected by Island West.
If it's any consolation, councillor Bonding by way of probably buying my stuff.
They are very popular.
Sorry, didn't realise. The waste will be generated. Sorry, I didn't realise this.
Isn't it good though that it's been recycled?
It's good.
Can I have a proposer, please? Thank you. And a second up? And a vote, please. Thank you. Okay. Finance number two, to consider the recommendation of the Finance and General Purposes Committee regarding six-month accounts. Yes, Mayor, the Finance and General Purposes Committee met yesterday. The six-monthly accounts were presented to them, and they voted unanimously to recommend them to the council. For councillor Johnson, do you have any more comments to make on the finances?
The finances are very good. We are fifty point zero one percent for six months' accounts, so thank you, Linda.
I'll see you in a bit after lunch.
Please. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Okay, finance number three, to ratify the accounts if appropriate. Appropriate to ratify, isn't it? Second up, thank you. And a vote. Thank you very much. Okay. Item seventy-six seventeen, Island Roads. Number one, to consider the actions of Island Roads during reservicing works in Braden. This is to do with closing one line earlier.
Any Island Roads, I think it is, why do you not have anything?
It's more than that. Mayor, councillor, Madam?
Um, I brought this to attention because I think after the last council meeting, I know we've had the public forum where they met. Unfortunately, I don't think they have learned their lesson because the week later they decided to close down West Lane. Uh, the road closed because they were working on Ashy Road. Uh, which had consequence of actually closing my business down. Even though people could go past, but the fact they had two road close signs on the way to get to it and well. Um, and that, you know, we had no visitors. And then the following, and then this week, on our last day of opening, they closed us down again with a proper bollocks. The chap saying, well, if people get out of the car and ask him, they'll let them through. Consequently, I had a phone call from a member of the public saying, uh, you know, it's a shame on the website you couldn't announce that you, that the road had been closed. Well, it's not for me to announce on my website, but Island Roads had closed, which actually was a day earlier than we had thought. The fact that they also had rang us up as a business at the beginning of the summer. And said, we confirmed the 3rd October being our closing day, they said we won't interrupt, we'll organise a draft list. So they just banned it a week before, a week, day before. That's my business. The Bugle and the King's Well, um, I know there was a frackle going on out there, but it was atrocious. People, the reason why the gentleman got a bit upset is because he got a taxi to go to the King's Well. Uh, from ride, his wife was home in crutches, so couldn't walk. And suddenly, when they're getting out of the pub, they couldn't get the taxi because the taxi, they'd have to wait at the end of Braiding. And they were told to walk. And, uh, of course he was getting upset, but that's upset business. And then the business suffered again because they closed their business a long time. Uh, but then the road was open, and then they opened up and they closed the road. This behaviour is not good for business. It upset a lot of residents. One resident that was, was trying to get back, they wouldn't let them through back down key lane. Uh, so they had to park on the Bugle and had to walk. Luckily, they were accompanied, but actually, but asking, um, a lady to walk down the key lane in the dark is actually, you know, not appropriate for Island Roads. I have tried to contact them, um, and speak to them, uh, about it. Um, I've got nice people on reception who said they raised my fire, my query about issues. They'd asked the manager to call me. The manager has not called me. And in fact, has refused to call me, I think, because basically every time I ring up, he's always at the meeting, always busy. Yesterday, a chap came up to our house to talk, oh, she has some council business. And that's him talking about it. Well, they could have called me and actually arranged a time to meet to talk about it. I don't know, I mean, I know that the businesses haven't been treated well here. I know a lot of other residents haven't been treated well by Island Roads. I don't think a post of letters with a letterbox saying sorry is appropriate. I do believe the management of Island Roads have to be accountable. I hope that the Island White Council will actually take this forward and it's, it's serious. If some electric came along and said, sorry, we're cutting off the electric a day early. I mean, we'd have the, not have the Western stock. I mean, Island Roads can't behave like they have. And to be told, well, you're lucky that we're getting the job done at least, is not a very helpful comment. Therefore, I think we should be using ourselves as a council, really protesting in the strongest terms we possibly can. To not only Island Roads, but also to the Island White Council. To say that something needs to be done and we should have some proper resolution and maybe compensation for the inconvenience caused to the town. Maybe not on an individual basis, but to the town, because as a gesture of goodwill. And that's my proposal and, and request, but let's, I bet I am.
Can I share, thank you, can I share another experience? And that was on the Friday night, when the weather was foul and the road was closed. Um, we met at Harding Shute. Some visitors who were towing rather a large caravan that were trying to get to Whitecliff Bay. And all they were, were facing was road closure signs. Uh, I suggested to them, because we were in air car, they were towing their caravan, that, that they may follow us down uh, towards the end of Coach Lane and park up so they could turn around. And I would go and explore with the Island Road staff, whether in fact, as a discretionary move, they would let them through if that was possible. Uh, I got to the road closure. There were half a dozen guys standing around. There was an HSS van Hart at the bottom of Coach, uh, Coach House Lane. But, but there was no obstruction to the road. The road was fine, the round rail was clear. I explained the situation that these people had driven down from Derbyshire. They had missed their ferry at Portsmouth, they were very tired and they didn't know where they were and they were visitors to our island. The guys on the actual hard closure refused point blankly to move the shipper truck for two minutes to allow the, uh, the, the visitors to come through. So that they could then turn left and still take a long route via St Helens to get to Whitecliff Bay. But in the finish, uh, I said to them, okay, they won't let us through, I will take you to Whitecliff Bay. Um, so just follow me. And we went obviously up over Bully Hill and back down and, uh, and, and over there. I just think that was unnecessarily cruel, uh, on behalf of the staff. I did notice, uh, the following week, seemingly for Island Roads' convenience, that two nights when it should, when the roadwork should have been finished, in fact, they weren't. And they were changing the day on the sign to increase the length of time that we'd been playing. So I agree, I, I think their attitude on the ground, on the day was lacking. And I think it showed us as, uh, as a tourist spot up in a poor light to our visitors. They were extremely grateful for the support that we gave them, however, it didn't help the situation.
I was just going to say, I walked out of here that night, saw the road closed. First of all, I'd read the sign wrong, so I went up to the end of my road and stuck my head round the sign and it was a day early. I'm sure, I, I, when I dealt with road traffic or road for a long time, I was always dealing with drivers, not road members. But surely you can't close and obstruct a highway without a legal order to do so. To do it on a day which your order is not valid must be unlawful. And once that, they'll be prosecuted. They ought to be pointed out, they have to be sure and stick to their, their regulations. On, on the other point about Island Roads, you mentioned, um, because it's a very wide, um, agenda item. Surely the contract they were given to resurface the Island Roads must have specified the roads to be resurfaced. So that contract must be, if not the cost, the cost is probably a private matter. But the scope of the contract should be a public matter which at least a councillor should get his eye on. And be able to see if the lane mentioned earlier is on that contract. If there was only a, a generic, um, oh, just please come and do the Island Roads. That's not a very good contract surely. It would need more detail than that.
Just, um, may I just let you know if the police that night informed the gentleman that the Island Roads had the right to close, anyway, it was only what? In respect of the emergency law. I don't know if that's right or not, I can't be.
I can't believe that's right. They will be obstructing that highway, I can't believe they're doing it.
Madam Mayor, please, um, assure the contract is, there must be a list because there are continual arguments between the Island White Council and Island Roads about whether it's an existing asset, as they care to call it, or indeed it's a new one. Because under the contract, I understand that existing assets have a responsibility for. New ones, the Island White Council have to pay for. So there must at some point be a schedule of what's existing. There can't be a schedule of what's new because it hasn't been founded enough to prove it.
Which is a question of.
There must be something the council can.
So can I ask one further? Who is the head of Island Roads and the, and not Island Roads, Island White Council for Island Roads?
Phil Murphy.
Could we invite Mr. Murphy to a meeting here to hear the concerns of the residents, please?
Excellent idea.
Especially to answer how the residents get a reservation to the inquiries. Because whilst you had a blog, in particular, I wrote as a resident, I know other residents have tried getting contact. Poor people on the front line of the desks, asking about cars and that just.
Madam Mayor, I just made a suggestion, if we're going to do it, can we do it for the December meeting? Now this week, there's already issue with public participation in the bed meeting. Does it be given plenty of time to clear his diary? Because at that point, the public can ask whatever they like.
Yes. I think that he would come really.
Well, it will come if he doesn't.
Yes, so, um, we need to resolve that. We need to. We need to resolve to decide. Yeah, what action to take, um. To resolve what action to take if appropriate. Um, can we have a proposal, please?
Well, I have a first proposal, that we actually write a letter to Island Roads itself in strong terms and the Island White Council with our Mr. Complaints. And if there are, and invite the members of the public to also put into us, to add to the dead end. I think that's a cancel and also open up a request, compensation or some form of a good old gesture to the town. And say to, to the residents. That's my proposal.
Semi-proposalist, do invite, same, uh.
But the Island White Council. Yours is the Island White Council, which is the Island White Council of the Island Roads.
So if I could recap then, Mayor. The first proposal is for the Town Council to write to the Island White Council and Island Roads with a list of complaints and ask the public to send in their concerns to Braiding Town Council to add to that letter. And the second proposal is to invite the head of the PFI team, Bill Murphy, to the December meeting to hear the concerns of residents.
On the first proposal, sorry, I was also given that we do request some form of compensation.
Sorry?
I think I would be getting some apology before just the letter, sorry. Because they haven't done that yet, that's clearly what we're seeing.
So. The first proposal then is to write to the Island White Council and Island Roads with a list of complaints and the public to send in comments to Braiding Town Council and request some form of compensation. And the second proposal is to invite, uh, the head of PFI, Bill Murphy, to the December meeting to hear concerns. The proposal for, the first proposal is councillor Bonsey. Could I have a second up, Madam Mayor, please?
Sorry, please, for that, would you invite Ian Ward, the elected member of Granton, if you could add that to your proposal?
Second is Richard Hudson. You go to first proposal, Madam Mayor. And the second proposal to invite Bill Murphy and Ian Ward then to the December meeting to hear the concerns of residents. The proposer is Miss councillor Hudson. And a second up. And a vote on that one, please. And a vote please, thank you. You asked a question there.
Yes.
How are we going to go about canvassing folks' opinion?
I was going to say that.
For the words for what's going to be a stiff letter. When's the next buzz coming out?
December.
Need a notice on a notice board, a minimum of something on the website perhaps.
When, when does it go out?
Can I also make a suggestion if you ask brag, who contact their members, um, and does their views?
It's, I know it's bringing next door. Oh, sorry, Brayton next door. Well, that could, there's a sort of very. But the, between them, they might cover a lot more.
Yes. Another idea might be if, um, if Juliet's not making, councillor Bristow's not making case that day. Um, we could go to the WI churches when they have their meetings and ask for their views, couldn't we?
We can find out more quickly, you think?
And school too. If the school thing is left out, I'm sorry to make it right to last hour.
Okay.
All right.
Just, just, if, if you want to, um, send one down to Cowal, I'm sure we can put, put one up in the station as well. Because there's quite a few people who have to reconnect in front.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, item 7717, Braiding Station. Report from station committee chairman, councillor Ramsden, on the Island White Day event.
Thank you. Um, we had an event, as, as I'm sure most of you are hopefully aware, on the 24th of September, which was a really good day. Financially, it was excellent. We took, I think it was £808 in a day, which is far in excess of what we would expect to take uh, on a normal, uh, trading day over a weekend. Uh, it was a forties theme. Um, everybody that, that came down and I chatted to made real positive comments about how it went. There, there was a lot of interest from, uh, the, the public who came down. And people were getting off the trains and joining in because, because they were enjoying what was going on. And it was a fairly small event, uh, so it, it does overly demonstrate what we can do. Carol Parks, the station manager, and I are now in discussion about events. So next year, uh, we are planning once again three events, but I'll give you more information about that as, as we get closer to them. I would just like to point out that we close at the end of this month, um, for the winter. But before that, uh, Carol and I are planning to, uh, do our own event on the 19th for the breast cancer awareness month, uh, when I will probably embarrass my colleagues by dressing up in pink. Um, but, but Carol and I are planning to try and raise some money, uh, with White Link and, um, South Western Train Support to, for that very worthy cause. Um, apart from that, work continues on repairs to the signal box. We're still waiting for scaffolding, uh, but, but I'm sure that, that's not far away. Uh, and I will talk to Linda outside this meeting to see if we can, can progress that. Uh, I know it's not strictly, uh, Braiding, uh, Station, but, but just to point out, I have put these on your chairs, which is another event which is coming up before the end of the month. So any support that can be given gratefully received, thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ramsden. I, I know we've done it already as a town council, but could you say thank you, um, verbally to as many of the volunteers as you can?
Done today as well.
Did you do it again? Because I couldn't, because I couldn't go.
Yes, of course.
I wasn't very well.
We missed you very much.
Thank you.
Seriously, we did. Um, you, you, you were always lovely to have a lot at, at the event. Uh, and it was a sad day that you weren't there. I have spoken to the volunteers today because I went down there. Um, but any that I haven't seen, I certainly will pass on their thanks again.
Madam Mayor, can I make a complaint? I wasn't lovely for being there apparently.
Well, you are lovely for actually being there. Sorry.
I think you need to practise.
I know, you know, my, my social skills are obviously in need of improvement.
Okay, thank you. Um, item 7817, Beach Grove Play Area. To consider the recommendation of the F Finance and General Purposes Committee regarding the replacement of the nest swing.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Finance and General Purposes Committee were asked to look at the costings of a replacement nest wing at Town Council meeting for the month. And, uh, the, they decided that they would like to replace the swing if full council agrees to that. And they have chosen one that costs £525 plus to be 18. Their recommendation is that it is replaced.
Thanks.
It's up to full council now to, um, agree with that or not.
All right, everybody, can I have a proposer? Thank you. And a second up. Thank you. And a vote please. Right. 7917, Town Park Reports and Updates. Number one, update September Town Council meeting.
There are very few updates to.
There are very few updates to speak about from the town council meeting, except that I have received quite a few emails regarding the standing orders which have been put on our query log. And I have contacted the people who have actually given me their contact details. This one has been signed, but I don't know where to send the responses. Was dropped in to the town council. There is no address on it, so I haven't been able to reply to that one because there's no address. There's nothing else to report on updates from the September meeting as far as I'm aware. Thank you. Updates from councillor surgeries. Yes, Madam Mayor, I reported up to number 11 last month. Number 12 was from a resident of St Mary's Road regarding parking outside in the cul-de-sac. Number 13 was from an Ajston resident regarding the grass verge cutting. No action has required for that one as it has been discussed with the traffic, at the traffic working party. Fanny Oglander came in, our number 14, and has queried the standing orders and the advice she had been given. And number 15 was foundry regarding the public participation. She said that some councillors forgot to turn their microphones on, but it was because the equipment was faulty, and inquired about the station sign, a brown sign for the station. And I have already responded to her because that issue has already been sorted out previously. That's enough, thank you.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I have one question. So we've had, how many people at the...
Fifteen.
Is that fifteen different people? Or is it five people and the same person ten times?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Can I just make an observation on an issue that was floating around for a very long time? And that is Fanny and I took a walk up this morning to Doctor's Lane, where there are now two posts in place. Okay, so one of the older issues looks like it has now been resolved. I've not walked to Stephen's End, but I'm sure this perhaps is...
We did learn, actually, that the dog bin...
Has gone.
Disappeared from there. Who is that? Is that councillors or Island Roads or...?
The lovely meeting group later in the office, Bonnie, had rung up about it this morning. Can you remember, please, our clerk? What was said? What was said? And how the clerk... No, stupid. It's okay, all right. I know that two people came into the office and mentioned that. And she said that she... They were coming to look, that's right. Whoever was responsible was coming to look at it, coming to look at the site to replace it. Hopefully. I'm going to sign this.
Sorry, Mrs. One requested there at Doctor's Lane. Yes, the bollards have been done, but part of the issue is the erosion of the verges and it's for a lady who gets to the daily descent on a mobility scooter. And the problem is with her wheels going into the verge. She's not totally well sighted.
No.
And that is because the verges haven't used her back yet, so we need to actually keep on to Island Roads to cut back the vegetation and then actually just fix the verges. Not exactly rocket science.
And Bonnie, Bonnie in the office has written an email to the people to do with the verges and the hedges and the trees that are there because two people have mentioned it, how overgrown it is and it's growing over into the gardens. So she's on to that one too. Okay. Town councillors' reports. Report from Iwel, Isle of Wight Association of Local Councils meeting held in September, councillor Grayling.
The breadth of discussion, I will, is actually quite remarkable. We've been from Home Share to international terrorism. But I thought, I'll tell you about some of the things that I've been given and I've got the minutes from that meeting particularly. If anybody wants to see these or the other paperwork, the Iwel website is not punctual at the moment. So if you're of big interest or any interest, ask me and I'll let you have my copies. At the meeting, there was a presentation by Home Share. It's an organisation which matches up, and they say carefully, matches up. I think lodger is the wrong word. People who would come and share your home and in return for the roof over their heads, they will give a share of expenses and be expected to do a certain amount of work, so many hours a week, be it lawn mowing, laundry, whatever was the right arrangement. And that is arranged by a Mrs Dyke couple. And I have her email address if anybody wants to be involved in that scheme. The normal visits to the meeting when we have, we discuss the minutes, et cetera. The Iwel is pressuring the Isle of Wight Council, to be clear, about youth funding for youth schemes. We should ask the Isle of Wight Council to match their funding from the past and if possible, increase it. And question the way in which there's limited periods for parish councils to apply such funding. Then we moved on to the island plan. It ranged wide and from the strange questionnaire and other things, and me putting my pennyworth in as usual. They talk about the requirement to build affordable homes. And I say that, and it didn't finish up in the minutes, but I remember saying at the meeting, I believe we should ask for affordable family homes of a decent proportion. It was announced that the secretary of Iwel will be leaving and the post will be advertised, we agreed to advertise the post. There are a couple of other reports and I've got copies of them. There's the Age Friendly Island Report, the Down to the Coast Newsletter, and one that I wrote about my business with AOV, which I told this meeting about last time. It was quite a while ago. The Iwel also has meetings with the Isle of Wight Council. And as I say, international terrorism came up. And the Iwel is keeping the council, you know, putting their feet to the fire and making sure that they have got a plan. And they seem to have made sensible answers to the questions. This is interesting to me and this is interesting to Bradying. Question from Iwel to the council. Can the Isle of Wight Council explain what is the latest position regarding business rates on toilets? As several of our members of the council have brought us up. Answer, the government has set out its intention to introduce legislation to enable local authorities, enable, interesting, go. To use their discretionary power to support publicly owned toilet, public toilets from the 1st of April 2018 through business rate relief. Unfortunately, we still don't know at this stage what this might look like and there's been no rule change, no change in legislation up to now. So at the moment, if the valuation office puts a valuation on it, the council expects it to be delayed. They was talking about raising of projecting regeneration, Transport Infrastructure Task Force. Will town and parish councils be given the opportunity to take control of local car parking? Is there a parking strategy? This question from Freshwater. The council has a parking strategy, but at the moment there's no policy for town and parish councils to have an opportunity to take over the council car parks as they provide an income stream to the council. As soon as I read that, I thought back to toilets as they are an income stream to the council. But there we are. Complaints about the appearance of new ball flower beds and teams. A general question about the floating bridge. The answer to that will come out in time. Will there be a feasible study into fixing over the Medina again? Yarmouth Parking. Future youth services funding. Would the Isle of Wight Council match their funding in the current financial year? Children's services account reviewing required saving options. I cannot at this stage comment on the youth offer grants. More about the island plan we come up with before. Lots of stuff comes through from Iwel. If anybody wants to see any of it, I could send it all on to you. I know that councillor Bonsey, as the replacement deputy and attender of Iwel, gets all these emails and has trouble looking over the top of the box sometimes. And it's bigger than me.
Thank you, councillor Grayling. Has anyone got any questions they'd like to ask councillor Grayling?
I was going to suggest, with the toilets, I suppose, you know. I was just wondering, would it be possible for the Isle of Wight Council to consider giving a grant to councils to pay business rates? As a way of getting granted.
You could have...
So the legislation doesn't come in on time.
We can always ask.
We can ask.
We can try, ask nicely. Okay, the next agenda item is the traffic working party. And that's councillor Hudsman.
Not too much to report this time because we were actually very short of numbers as we gave the mayor's deal. But what we have agreed to do but haven't set it up yet is to have a site visit around Ajston, looking at the issues that the residents have raised. We're going to invite Island Roads and the Isle of Wight Council. And indeed, one of our district councillors, if they're about. So that is, that's the plan. We don't know when it is yet because...
One sec, you're setting it for a missed call.
Sorry, it's to look at the issues around the roads in Ajston. Your colleague may want to do it, but...
No, that's okay, I'm dealing with, yeah, okay.
So that is it for the organisation. The second thing is about this Doctor's Lane that's been partially resolved. And the third thing is cycle strategy for the Isle of Wight in general for this area. My coofer, who is a very key cyclist, is actually going to champion that. So that is with him at the moment. And that is it for that meeting.
Okay, thank you councillor Hudsman.
Good question. I was just wondering if it'd be possible, as an idea, could we have the actual plan or the issue register put on the website so people could see if one of their problems is...
Get that far down the road.
Well, you get that, that would be nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of preparatory work to do before that. We are fighting, fighting here.
Just thinking the wall wall is a good start.
Yes, it is, no matter what we're going to do in Ajston.
Okay, next item. Mayor's report on recent engagements attended. I didn't know this was on there. Well, I remember last night, last night was the horticultural show and I went to the show to give the prizes out. That was lovely. It's one of the best bits about this voluntary job is doing things like that. I know that councillor Bonsey opened the show and that was good. Yeah, such clever people though. So clever, unbelievably. And none of them believe that they're that clever, but they are. They need to work and, you know, the crafts and photography and things like that. I guess really, because I haven't been very well, I haven't been to many places. I have recently worked out and supported a resident's issue and problem by taking them to Citizens Advice Bureau in Newport, making an appointment and then taking them to Sandad, to the hub, which is very satisfying if, you know, if it works out and you know that you've actually helped them. And I like doing that because, because I can. Because I can and because people ask me and it's not a difficult thing to do. It's good that people in Bradying know that there is someone who can help them if they don't know where to go. At the moment, I can't think of anything else. Oh, yes, the youth club. On Friday morning, there was a men in sheds meeting and I went along to that really to gather information, but also to meet some of the people that were there. And that was very enjoyable. I haven't been in the youth club for a long time. And the room that they go to use for their shed within the youth club is an old storeroom. That was an old play group storeroom when I worked there. That's good. And I've offered to paint it. They've probably after a few brush strokes, they probably won't want me to do it anymore. But that was good, meeting the people there. And two of them talked about the sheds, also had two issues that they wanted to report as well, which is another good thing. I met people there that I didn't even know, which, you know, is another great thing. And where they live, right down the end of areas in Bradying. And I think that's it. I think that's it. Gosh, I'm going to be quiet now and move on to the next thing, which is committees. Report from the 4th of October meeting from chairman of the planning committee, the deputy mayor, who's here. Oh, you're the deputy?
Deputy chairman is going to take over.
I do apologise. I do apologise councillor Bridget, I...
That's all right. Well, we had two applications to consider. The first one, the first one we didn't object to, but highlighted that we wanted the materials and the front elevation to reflect the properties around it. The second application was objected to because of the design and the fenestration concerns. And we felt it didn't comply with Bradying neighbourhood plan and other policies. Thirdly, the response to the core strategy survey has been submitted to the local planning authority before the closing date with advice taken from a qualified planner. Fourthly, no decisions have been made in respect of the carpenters' road holiday lodge application, change of use application in the High Street or the waste transfer station application at White Peel Woods. That was all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, report from the 4th of October meeting of Finance and General Purposes Committee, councillor Dutton.
My three items here have been discussed already. The decision was made to replace the net swing of Beach Grove. The half yearly accounts show 50.01%, which was excellent. The half yearly accounts show fifty point zero one percent, which was excellent. Public participation was discussed and an agenda item will be considered at the next month's full town council meeting.
Okay, this is the last item on the agenda. The Isle of Wight councillors' reports. Councillor Tindall.
Right. I added a shortlist when I came here and then listened to various things. I've got a number of changes. One is about, on finance, about the cost of the bags and so on. You do know that the Isle of Wight council is going to introduce a new green story, brown scheme. So I don't know how many bags you've got, but you might have over ordered them. Because when that comes out, you'd be able to have a bin which will collect all your garden waste and it's going to cost about fifty two pound a year. Is that okay? I don't, I just, yeah, did you know about that, I take it?
Yes, I did. Councillor Mervyn brought it to our attention.
Oh, last one.
However, the brown bins are going to be chargeable. Residents will be charged fifty pounds a year to have those bins. And if residents don't want to have one of those bins...
They can buy your bags.
They can. And they can carry on buying the bags.
That's fine.
So we haven't wasted our money.
Just sort of warehouseful of...
Can I ask a question on that beat? Can you have the brown bin and the bags or is it one or the other?
The answer to that is I don't know. I think they're expecting you have one or the other. Which one is she, the green bag or the brown bin? I'm sure some arrangement could be kind to her. Okay. The other thing was, you talk about getting, one of the things you was talking about, about getting information about the island roads fiasco. What I was going to suggest was, could you go to the pubs? A, to talk to them as individuals because they suffered as well. But it's also maybe a place where you can put notices up and get some more advice from it as well. I saw Steve would be pleased to go around the pubs. That's that one. You also mentioned... The other one was you was talking about island road assets and everything. There is obviously a list of all the assets of what they've got tucked away somewhere. And I'll should try and find out for your road. The adjutant, you wanted a meeting about that at some stage. This is for the road work which will come in next year.
That is the verges. It's just generally to actually drive which...
Okay, and Michael will be there as well. You'll say, did you mention it? That's okay. And you was also mentioning the wall walk. Have you got one of those requested? Okay, obviously, I'd like to be aware of that one. I've done one in Benbridge just recently. So this is going to get a bit rounder, but the things I picked up on your meeting, on the fixed link. Just to state one thing, and I don't know if it was...
The Medina link for fixing is interesting.
I thought you were talking about railway.
It was about a Medina fixed bridge over the river Medina.
Bridge?
A bridge from Whippingham to...
No, they're thinking of a tunnel.
Whatever, a fixing.
Yeah, it's a fixed link. The Isle of Wight council's attitude is, because we had a, we had a meeting which was in two parts, one for and one against. One's for, they want to put a, get an investigation into that and then submit it. The Isle of Wight council's attitude to that is, they're not going to pay for it, first thing. If this private body want to do it, they pay for it. And the second thing is, they don't want their name put against it unless they know it's a perfectly free and independent survey of the fixed link. They don't want to get into the situation, you go into a consultation and you know what the result is that you want and therefore you structure it to get it. Okay? But personally, I don't think the fixed link will happen. There you go. I could ask questions on the floating bridge but I'd rather not. Bollards we've already done. Talking about, was it Lyn does talk about parking in St Mary's Road? Yeah. I've asked questions of Ian Ward about that because apparently there's a change in the overall island policy. But he didn't seem to know about it when I spoke to him, so I might get on. Right. Oh, the other, the resurfacing, now it may be my imagination, but let me go up and down. I feel that car speeds have actually slowed down. Yeah, I think it's this uncertainty of how much of the road we've got. You know, and I saw a lorry basically going up the middle. So I think the lack of a white line in the middle, which we have to thank somebody for and others, was a good idea and it's working. Last one, last but not least is Sounddown Academy. I suppose you've all heard that it's been saved, it's not going to close. That's because the Isle of Wight council under Conservative leadership have got that sorted out. Sorry, I've got to get a part of the political point. Excuse me, I'm just kind of coughing a minute. What's happening in this week or so is a decision is going to be made whether they can find another organisation running an academy to run it or it will actually almost be run by the council itself and be part of a complete school, the primary schools. That would be a complete age group all the way through. Won't know the details to some time around about now. And finally, it's, this is a sort of request to the council. As you know, I saw the lady this morning, beginning the evening, about the airport and all the problems that there. Okay, now, very, very simply, the Isle of Wight council could do absolutely nothing about the airport in any way, which means parish councils can't do anything either. It means us as individual councillors, one moment, can't do anything as well. But what, I know it's going to be brought up at the next meeting. What we'd like to be able to do is for you as a councillor to give your moral support to the lady who's trying to do it. If she gets the support from the various parish councillors as well, then Bob Seeley will look at it without... So we need to get everyone together. So I'm going to approach Newchurch Parish Council and the county council, asking them. And if you could do the same, and that's two local councils will do the same, then we can all go to Bob and say, we support what she's trying to do. That's for next week. That's a preliminary. I know we can't do anything, sorry, sorry Steve. No, absolutely zilch. Well, you know, unless it's a planning type issue, zilch. I could forward you on an email from, you know, the officer concerned, if you've got time. But there's literally nothing we can do. But she needs, then she can get a case together to him and then to approach CAA. No, it's not planning issue. Finished.
Thank you very much for that information. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to close the meeting now. Our town council meeting at, I'll see, eight twenty. Thank you for coming.